I'm sorry, yeah, May 12th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And we'll go ahead and do a roll call by staff.
Chairman Limblum.
Here.
Vice Chair Slasher. Vice Chair Slasher.
Luke, you're on mute if you can hear us.
Yes, here.
Arnett. Commissioner Swart.
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner McGee.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Montoya.
Here.
And Commissioner Dan Zeison. Chairman, we have a quorum.
All right. So Commissioner Slasher, did we get your audio working? Did we actually get where we could hear him? I just want to make sure.
I am here.
Yeah, he's talking, but we can't hear him, just so you know.
I don't know what the problem is.
We'll work through that real quick.
I'll call back here.
Although it is kind of nice to not hear him today.
Chairman Slasher, I can hear you. You're being heard on the webinar. I think it's an auditory.
Okay. Not the first time.
All right, while they're doing that, I'll go ahead and do this announcement. This meeting has been noticed in accordance with open meeting laws. According to Arizona revised statutes, section thirty-eight dash four thirty-one, agendas are available within twenty-four hours of each meeting in the Maricopa Planning, in the Maricopa County Planning and Development Office, and are also available on the Planning and Development website one week prior to hearing at www.mericopa.gov backslash planning. The staff reports prepared for each agenda item shall become a part of the permanent record for each case. With respect to the hearing process, cases will be considered in the order they appear on the agenda unless otherwise agreed to by the commission. For each case, the applicant will be given a set amount of time to present. Anyone wishing to speak on a particular case shall fill out a speaker's card for those that are in person attendance, or raise your hand within the go-to webinar. Amount of time allowed for speaking shall be at the discretion of the commission chair, and staff will provide the chairman with the names of persons who have registered and noted desire to comment. And those registered participants who have raised their hand, and those registered participants who have raised their hand. The chairman will call on each named participant one at a time. The chairman will conduct the hybrid in-person and virtual public hearing according to the bylaws and according to the rules established by the chairman regarding public comment. Votes will be done by roll call vote only, and the chairman will verbally identify the specific members responsible for all motions and seconds. Yeah, a little fun to do this here and there, but it is great to see people in person again. I enjoy that. We'll go ahead and have the minutes for April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two entered on the record. If there's any comments from the commission, we'll hear them at this time. All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and approve those minutes. We'll move now into our next portion of the meeting, our consent agenda. We'll go ahead and have the staff present the cases. Good morning. Did we get Commissioner Slasher figured out? Can we still hear you or not?
Can you hear me now?
Nope, not yet.
Can't help you. I can hang up and.
There's four items on consent. They are MCP two thousand twenty zero zero three, known as Freedom, boat and RV storage in District Four. This site, seven acres at the southeast corner of one hundred thirty-seventh in Glendale. The request is a military compatibility permit with planning development for an RV and boat storage in the C-two M-A-A-M-F overlay zoning district. No known opposition, paragraph twenty. Recommendations for approval, subject to conditions A through K. Z two thousand twenty-one one eighteen, known as the Chappelle Family Project in District One, is a zone change to C-two C-U-P-D for four-plus acres east of the southwest corner of German Road and Lindsay Road. The Town of Gilbert Plan calls for general office. The Town of Gilbert has written in support. There's no known opposition, public opposition. The recommendation is for approval in paragraph fourteen, subject to conditions A through H. Z two thousand twenty-two zero fifteen, known as the Arlington Valley Solar Energy in District Four, is a special use permit modification of conditions to preserve right-of-way for three hundred ninety-fifth Avenue and to extend the S-U-P validity to five eleven twenty-seven for a one thousand four hundred twenty-nine acre site south of the southwest corner of Elliott and three hundred eighty-seventh Avenue. The old U.S. Highway eighty area plan designated this site for industrial uses. There's no known opposition. The recommendation is for approval, subject to conditions A through double B in paragraph eleven. And finally, Z two thousand twenty-two zero fifty-eight, known as Fifty-Fifth and Baseline in District Five, is a zone change to C-two C-U-P-D to permit to menu board speakers at fifty feet from residential property lines. The site is two and a half acres at Fifty-Sixth Avenue and Baseline in Levine. There's no known opposition. The recommendation in paragraph twelve is for approval, subject to conditions A through F. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Always quick and concise. Are there any questions from the commissioners on any of these consent agenda items? All right, hearing none. Is there anyone that has indicated they'd wish to speak from the public with a raised hand?
Chairman, no, we don't.
Okay, great. Well, if that's the case, I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda presented.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Arnett. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, second by Commissioner Hernandez. We'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, possibly.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Approved. Approved.
Yeah, let's, let me just pause real quick. Can we hear from anybody on the webinar? Commissioner McGee, can we hear you? Can you talk a little bit?
This is Commissioner McGee, and I'm hearing Commissioner Slasher, and I just heard Commissioner Hernandez. And I.
And we can hear you. So it's just Commissioner Lawrence and Slasher having issues.
This is Commissioner Montoya, I can hear everything.
Commissioner Lawrence here.
Yes, I can hear everything. This is Commissioner Montoya.
Okay, and Commissioner Lawrence?
I can hear everything as well. Can you hear me?
Okay, and then Commissioner Slasher, did we figure you out? We're really good at reading lips over here, so.
I think Commissioner Slasher, you are muted on your side.
How about now?
No, I just agree.
I took it off of the landline and just put it on my computer.
Thank you. Your voice is music to our ears.
I'm sure it is.
So let's continue with that roll call vote. Just for clarity, we are on, we have a motion and a second for the consent agenda item, and that's what we're voting on.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
Commissioner Swart.
Yes.
This is Commissioner McGee, and I vote yes.
Commissioner Arnett.
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya.
Yay.
Commissioner Dan Zeison.
Yes.
Vice Chair Slasher.
Yes.
Chairman Limblum.
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval of the consent agenda by a vote of nine to zero.
All right, great. It's great to have nine of us here today. It's awesome. We will go ahead and move to our next item on the agenda, and thank you to those that came today for those cases and for all your hard work to get those over the hurdle here. We'll go ahead and move to regular agenda item. So we're on item number five, Z two thousand twenty-one one five five, handicapped Olive and Reams. I actually have a conflict on this case, which I didn't get to talk to anybody before, so. But I do have a conflict, and so I will recuse on this agenda item. And if I'm doing that, do I turn it over? Yeah, I'll go ahead and, Commissioner Slasher, can you handle number five for me?
Based on our last meeting, I don't know that I'm allowed to. I guess that's up to staff.
Oh, because he's not here? Okay, so Commissioner Hernandez, would you?
My correct staff.
Go on to do it?
Sure.
All right. So I'm going to go ahead and recuse, and then also I'll step away for this one, and you'll run number five. And I'll give you this, just so that you have it. Oh, you got it? Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
All right, cool. So I guess we'll leave it to staff to present the case.
That's correct. Good morning, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is case Z two thousand twenty-one one five five, handicapped Olive and Reams. Next slide, please. The applicant is proposing a major amendment of the approved Z two thousand twenty one oh two IND-two IUPD development standards with a precise plan of development on an approximately seventy-four acre site. The site is generally located a quarter mile northwest of the northwest corner of Olive Avenue and Reams Road in the Glendale area. Next slide, please. Once this request is approved, the development for the site will be light industrial and manufacturing distribution center. Main access of the site will be from Reams Road via a new private roadway that will cross the property to the east and traverse through the property, middle of the property, middle of the site. Next slide, please. Indicap will be an industrial park with three separate buildings, which will be speculative office and warehousing structures. The buildings will be constructed on-site and left in shell condition for future tenants. This proposed amendment will be in conformance with CPA two thousand twenty zero zero five and Z two thousand twenty one oh two, except for the requested modifications. This amendment requests us to vary one of the approved IND-two IUPD development standards and two of the IND-two base development standards on this site. The property, primary request of this is to vary the maximum structure height from the required forty feet to forty-nine feet to accommodate a manufacturing distribution center to be constructed to today's industrial standards. Another request is to eliminate the screening requirements along the site's eastern and southern boundary where planned industrial uses will be developed. Finally, there is a request to allow industrial uses within the required yards of the site adjacent to any street or reserved right-of-way. Next slide, please. Here is the north part of the site illustrated in building A. Next slide, please. Here is the south part of the site showing building B and C. Next slide, please. The applicant notified property owners within three hundred feet of the site and the area interested parties. During the applicant's citizen participation process, staff has received eight letters of opposition by adjacent neighbors, two of which live within three hundred feet of the site. The first opposition received was against the increase in height of the structure due to privacy concerns. As a result of this concern, the developer is not planning to add any windows on the north side of the north building. And with the insured buffering measures and distance from the property lines with residential uses, this will have a minimal impact to the adjacent residential plan, or even planned residential uses to the north. Other opposition members are opposed to the potential noises from the loading and unloading of vehicles, while others are opposed to the potential light pollution from the site. Staff did receive comments from Luke Airport's face with no objections to the proposed height increase of the new structures. Staff is in support of the major amendment of the approved Z two thousand twenty one oh two IND-two IUPD zoning for this site. The plan to develop the site as an industrial park with structures ready for industrial tenants will be appropriate for an area with existing and planned industrial uses. Furthermore, this type of development will add skilled manufacturing employment opportunities that will foster strong regional economy in this part of the county. Therefore, staff are recommending approval of Z two thousand twenty-one one five five, subject to conditions A through L listed in the staff report. And this concludes my presentation. Thank you, members of the commission.
Thank you, Martin.
Your honor.
Is there any questions from the commission for the staff? Can I ask one question? It's called a major amendment to something. We're not changing zoning here. Is there a minor, and what triggers the major? Just educate me a little bit here. What, is any variation whatsoever a major?
In this case, it would be a major modification, because we're, instead of before, if it was just a modification of a condition, we would just be conditioning that condition about the height. However, we're going to be adding two extra conditions and adding a precise plan of development on this. Therefore, it's going to be a major amendment.
So it's a quantity thing?
Correct.
Okay, got it. I just.
Acting Chairman and Commissioner Arnett, in particular, we are varying a development standard of the underlying zoning district that was not varied with the IUPD.
I understood.
That is a major, that will always be a major amendment.
That's what I figured. So it just seems so serious, like that's major. Everything is a variation essentially. It's a, it's a change, right? I just, more education, thank you. Any commissioners on the call have any questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner McGee. I need clarification on the structures in relationship to the Twelve Oaks residential area. I think I'm directionally challenged. I can't figure out from the information that has been given where these buildings will go up in relationship to the residential area next door.
If you could go back to a slide that showed building A. It was kind of all back. Or in addition, yeah, if you go by this, you're going to notice that to the north of that property line, in that north of there, there's going to be a residential subdivision currently going through the preliminary plat stage, and that's on the top of the plan. In addition to the northwest, which is kind of on that upper left-hand corner, is the existing Twelve Oaks Estates residential subdivision. And the buffering in place on there would be a hundred feet from the adjacent residential. That's going to be where those retention basins are. In addition, they're going to be pushing the actual building A even further from that north property line to kind of act as a buffer.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Montoya, I have a question. Where is the railroad tracks?
Now, the railroad tracks, if you go back to the slide that showed buildings B and C on the south side, if you go right by Olive Avenue, it's right along Olive Avenue, right where that retention basin on the southern part of the site is, is the railroad line. On the north side. Your honor.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Slasher.
I have a question for staff. So if you go back to the slide with the existing commercial buildings to the east.
Excellent.
There was, yeah, that one there where it's Glendale. So what's this major amendment here? One of the changes is increasing, obviously, the height by what, nine feet? What's sort of the average, the average height of those existing buildings there to the east? Or what are they compared to what they're?
I'm really not too sure of the height of those. They are in Glendale. I would probably say it may be around that same, maybe forty-nine, maybe a little bit higher, but I'm not sure.
Maybe the applicant will know the answer to that. I'll ask the applicant.
And to that point, is forty-nine feet a standard height? This is Commissioner McGee.
Well, actually, we do have the applicant here.
Yeah, the applicant's online. I suggest we let him give his presentation, might clear up some of these questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commission members, Bill Lally, Tiffany Bosco, twenty-five twenty-five East Calabac Road here today representing the applicant. So we have some slides. We want to make it worth your while coming down, all the way down here today for one case. We could go through some slides, but what maybe I'll do is just go to some of the questions that were asked in terms of the height, the justification for the height, the height and proximity to the adjacent neighbors. If we could go to the next slide. Maybe, maybe go to the next slide, I apologize. So again, let me walk you through kind of the bigger picture. The residential that's on the northeast corner, northwest corner of the site was actively involved in the zoning case that we did about a year ago. So a year ago, we came before you and rezoned about twice the size, this portion to industrial and north part to residential. As the residential homes were adjacent to the existing Twelve Oaks, we did have some limited heights, we had some larger sizes, we had some buffers. On this particular property, the industrial property, at the time, since we didn't know exactly where the buildings were going to be, today, there's a twenty-five-foot landscape setback requirement and industrial adjacent rule. We increased that to a hundred. We didn't know where the buildings were going to be, but we went ahead and increased that to a hundred in a prior case. In that prior case, any lighting within that landscape setback was going to be maximum of twelve feet. So from a context, we have the buildings across the street to the east, which is the Wolf Center, which is, gosh, I think seven hundred acres of industrial buildings. They went through the city of Glendale and got a hundred feet of height on the majority of it, a hundred and thirty-five feet of height on the north end, and then at the very bottom corner closest to Luke, they are limited to thirty-five. About six or eight months ago, our office processed another case just south of Wolf, off of Reams. In city of Glendale, now I get it, city of Glendale, but adjacent to single-family, and you can kind of see if you look down Reams. Let me maybe go back to the other slide. First slide before that. What you'll see is kind of, it's the first area, yeah. On the south side of, I guess, northern there, there's another parcel that we rezoned, went through the process, and again, we're granted a hundred feet. We had, we had buffers, but we didn't have a hundred. So in this case, the buffer in Maricopa County is about four times the size or width as it would normally be. In exchange, we're asking for nine additional feet of height. If we could go to, flip through a couple of slides, we do have a line of sight, keep going exhibit, yeah, keep going, that might be helpful to show you. Maybe stop here just for a second, just to give you an understanding. Let me talk a little bit about the screening requirement. So to the west of this, or I'm sorry, to the east of this property is a large flood-controlled drainage basin, a regional basin, that was actually taken from this property owner by Flood Control years ago. And I say taken, meaning they were compensated for. But that is Rule forty-three today. It'll stay Rule forty-three as a large regional basin. The screening requirement that we're asking to be relieved really is to that basin, right? Because it's residentially zoned theoretically, Rule forty-three, but it's not going to be any residential homes. The parcel to the south of it, we actually have under contract right now, the same client, to rezon that, and we have a zoning case for industrial. The screening on the east side now, you're left there, makes a lot of sense, given that we're either going to have a retention basin, more industrial, or potentially a hundred-foot-tall buildings, you know, further east. Maybe go to the next slide, we did the line of sight. Maybe keep going. Yeah, there's, there's another exhibit, keep going, sorry about this. No, keep going. Well, this one's pretty good. So even though we had a hundred-foot landscape buffer that was required in the prior zoning case that we're keeping instead of the twenty-five-foot landscaping buffer, what you'll see here is to the very first property from our building is about a hundred and seventy-five feet away. So keep in mind, before twenty-five-foot setback for landscaping, then normally some parking and then a building, you know, you could potentially, without the compromise or the steps from the prior case, this building could be within about thirty to thirty-five feet from existing homes. That first lot is actually actually making lots there. So to give you an understanding, the line of sight from a hundred and seventy-five feet away to their property line, in addition to nine feet, almost, you almost can't even tell the difference. We do have an exhibit that shows that. If you can go to the next slide. So, hard to see, I know, maybe on your screens you can see a little bit better, but we did do a line of sight exhibit. The line of sight exhibit shows from the existing lot that's there today. It shows where the landscaping is on our side. The amount of buffers. The line of sight will be almost entirely blocked by either landscaping or the distance between residential homes and future buildings. And what was also mentioned, I think, in the presentation is that we have no windows at the top. This is not an office building, you have people up there peering down into neighbors. This is an industrial building. There's windows up there for light, that's about it. There's no people up there, there's not going to be any activity up there peering down. The letter that was referenced says, "I don't want people peering down in my backyard." Well, we hear that a lot when we have a two-story home really close to a single-story home, and they say, "I don't want the people in the two-story looking down." This is a completely different situation. We're a hundred and seventy-five feet away. There are windows, but they're for lighting. There's no second-story office employment issue. So, Mr. Chairman, members, hopefully that answered a few of the questions. Yep. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Questions for the applicant?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner McGee. Would Mr. Lally address the loading dock that was referenced in the letter of opposition? Where is that going to be?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Ms. McGee, maybe we can go to a site plan exhibit, I think that's a few back. Yeah, so Ms. McGee, as you can see, the loading is actually facing east and west. It doesn't face north to the existing residential directly to the north. Again, there is residential to the north, and then there's residential to the north and to the northwest. Most likely, as I indicated, to the west. Well, I haven't indicated, but what we hear is the property to the west is most likely to be developed as industrial as well.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the commission for the applicant? All right, staff, is there anybody online or registered to speak today? No? No, how many would say?
There is no indication from the attendees that they would like to speak.
Okay, since there's nobody else, then we will close the public forum, and it'll be open for commission discussion. And if any chairman have any comments, I'd like to hear them now.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Slasher.
I guess in reading the letters of opposition and then the applicant answer my questions, I don't think it's, even though it's a major amendment, I don't think it's an unreasonable request to ask for additional nine feet, considering, I think the applicant said the buildings across the street were up to a hundred and thirty-five feet. So I don't think it's an unreasonable request, and I'm in favor of this amendment.
Thank you, Commissioner Slasher. If nobody else has any comments, I'd like to give my two cents on it. I echo Commissioner Slasher's comments about it. I'd also like to note that in the line of sight exhibit, the building is ten feet lower than the adjacent parcel. So increasing the building by nine feet really doesn't move the needle much on what was originally approved. And given the distance that the building is from the property line, I don't think it's an unreasonable ask, and I think that the applicant has gone above and beyond to be a good neighbor and move their buildings, you know, a hundred and fifty-plus feet away from the property line. So that's my two cents. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just want to quickly tell you that I also agree. And when you find that everybody's had an opportunity to speak, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Fantastic. I go ahead and make a motion if you're ready. Commissioner Swart.
Thank you, Chairman. As it relates to the regular agenda item number five, I move for approval with all of the stipulations as listed.
Thank you, Commissioner Swart. We have a motion by Commissioner Swart. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McGee, I second.
Thank you, Commissioner McGee, with a second. I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Approved. Approved.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Swart?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya?
Yay.
Commissioner Dan Zeison?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schlosser?
Yes.
Chairman, we have an approval by a vote of eight to zero, and Chairman Lindblom is recused.
Great, and he should come back in if someone wants to get him. Get out of your cage. All right, thank you for doing that, Chairman Hernandez. We have a little bit other matters. Evidently, May twenty, go ahead, Darren.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that zipper meeting is canceled.
All right, our May twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two zipper meeting's been canceled, and if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and adjourn. All right, thanks.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Commissioner Hernandez. Take care.